1920 that were new to the district, a little bit less here in 2020. change over time. And this map is on page 29. And I think the district will be able to give you guys the video or put it out on the website. It's pretty fascinating to see the changes. If we go on to page 30 of the reports, you'll see more information in the full report about all the transfers, and these are intra-transfers. So transfers of students between the buildings. And the dots represents where students at the elementary level for this particular map, where they were residing and how they attended to a different building. So the way to look at the table that's on page 30 is on the top side, it's the school that the student was residing in. And as you go down that column, you'll see the number of kids that attended a different building. So if I look at Ed Clapp, we had two that are at Bennett's. We have six that are at Centennial, five that are at Eagles. And this gets at some of the school choice. It may be where programs are or where programs are not. It's based on how we know where students are in reflection to their residence and what building they're actually attending. And in the full report, you'll see that for middle school and high school. If we move to page 37, we also provided some analysis that you can see what type or number of students that we're getting for the type of developments. And so when we look at the single family yield rates that's on page 37, listed by each building with the current attendance area, you can understand the number of students for every 100 single-family units. And so for the district row in 2003, we averaged 20 K5 students for every 100 units. As we've moved over time to 2020, we're averaging 15 for every 100 units. But in this same time period, we've built over 8,200 single-family units. So it's quite remarkable, the amount of developments. And even though the yield rate's gone down, you have a lot larger amount of inventory. We also document this for multifamily, which would be everything that's not single families, so twin homes, duplexes, apartments and whatnot. If I move on to page 41, this is a map that gives you a visual of where we are thinking growth likely will happen. Specifically on the South Side, because that's where the majority of it is. And we worked with the city on understanding where infrastructure is, where they were at with some preliminary plots, final plots, the comprehensive plan, the flood diversion, all of the different things that are going to have an impact in the areas specifically south of 52nd and more so even south of 64th Avenue. The green represents where we are indicating there is currently or will be in the next five years, likely developments. The purple areas that we see down there are areas we think will be closer to 10 years. The key component to all this is whoever owns the land has to have a desire to build. We have to have this flood diversion to allow it to be a more affordable product that could be built there. We spoke a lot with the city about the size of lots and how the smaller lots tend to be absorbed faster than the larger lots. So we've tried to integrate that all into our analysis. If we move to page 42, we've given you analysis that when you look at the full report, it breaks it out by each of the high schools. I'm just showcasing what's at Davies High School. You'll see four tables. Table one is the number of single-family units. It's going to be represented by the orange bar. The number of students is the blue line. Table two is for multifamily. And so you can see how units come online and what that means for the number of students. Table three is the aggregate of table one and two. So in Davies High School attendance area, we have more students in 2020 than we definitely had back in 2010. Table four is that you understand the type of housing, whether it's single-family or multifamily, by each of the high school attendance areas. So we can see in Davies High School, we have about 57% multifamily and 43% single-family. Again, multifamily is everything that's not single-family. If we move on to page 49, that just gives you a highlight of some of the things that we know are impacting your enrollment and could continue to impact your enrollment as it relates to COVID-19. Things that we're developing really here in the last couple of weeks is what we're calling an instructional modality. We're starting to understand with all the returns of all the districts we do this type of work for, the choices they made of in-person, hybrid, or virtual online does have an impact on potentially what you can see for enrollment. So this is all part of that COVID-19 that we're trying to dig into to really understand what is a recovery of students moving forward over the next five years. Page 50 illustrates the past enrollments in the primary colors, red being elementary, blue being middle school, green being high school. The likely RSP projection is the pastel colors. And so you can see from 1920 to 2021, we've had this dip in K-12 enrollments. And we're showing a recovery in 2122, making the assumptions we're going to see a lot of positive activity related to things that are happening in your community, whether it's related to job growth, the flood diversion and so on. Then you can see it's kind of a stable enrollment going forward. We did provide information on page 51 with Woodrow Wilson Student Info, because those students we have aggregated into the high schools. But we wanted you to know, we do understand that those students are coming from each of the different high schools. And so you can see how that aggregation is on page 51 by grade. Page 52 is to give you an understanding of the information that follows with the breakdown of enrollments and the forecast of the enrollments for each of the buildings. The key component here, and I'm going to, on page 53, the focus that I have here is with Bennett's Elementary, we have a target enrollment there of 682 students serving for our purpose, K through five. And as you move to the right, we show you that enrollment three different ways. The middle row, green font labeled reside, is the number of students that resided in that attendance area. So having an address that they should actually be at Bennett. The bottom row, blue font labeled attend, is the number of students, K5, that attended that building. The top row for each building, purple font labeled red/ATT, is a subset of reside. That's the number of students that resided and actually attended that building. So if we look at Bennett and we go out to 2021, we had 581 students that actually resided in that boundary. We had 585 that were attending it. So you would naturally think, hey, we increased by four kids. Well, we actually only had 575 of the 581 reside and attend. So we picked up 10 students from one of the other elementary buildings. As you move to the right, you're going to see that forecast based on the reside and based on the attend with the current boundaries. Where we see orange shading, that's where it exceeds the capacity or the target enrollment for that building. So on this page, we can see in the future, we have issues at Bennett's with both the reside and the attends. And you can control the attend more with some of the options, transfers that are happening. It takes a little bit of some control to make sure the attend doesn't hit it, but that is a possibility. When you go to page 54, you'll see there's no capacity challenges at any of the other elementary buildings. When we go to the secondary, this is where we start to run into some challenges at Ben Franklin by 2526. We have been having capacity challenges at Discovery from 1819 through 2021, and we show that that continues all the way through 2526. And then you can see that impact at the high school. It's already over capacity here in 2021. And it goes that way all the way through 2526. And then I just want to highlight for the middle enrollment, you can see we're over that district-wide target enrollment by 2526. Again, I know there's some flexibility in what that target enrollment could be, and it's based on having the ideal number of kids that work their way from the elementaries into the middle schools and then the high school. The next following pages on page 56, we show a breakdown of that likely enrollment with the reside by grade for each of the buildings. Page 57, we show you that if the attend trends continue for each of those buildings, again, by grade. And then page 59, which I think is my last slide, and I'll open up for maybe some comments or questions for the next 10 minutes. Really just making sure that the last bullet points, what the district chooses for their instructional modality, is it in-person, hybrid, virtual, online? That's going to impact what the enrollment is. Do we achieve what our forecast is or is it under it? That's really the key component. There's definitely capacity issues. And I know later in your agenda, you have some things talking about attendance areas and changes. Hopefully this data provides you enough background that you can see some of the things that are happening specifically in the Middle South and South that are going to result in a need for some changes to those boundaries. So without let you all have questions or comments, and I have a hard stop of 607.
All right. Thank you, Rob. This is Rebecca. Does anyone have any questions for Rob? Seth?
Rob, that heat map that you showed, you said it was a 10-year span. Is that the past 10 years or is that a projected 10 years?
That is the past 10 years, so actual data.
Okay.
Do you have another question, Seth, or is that it? Okay. Anyone else? Jennifer?
Thank you. Rob, so you mentioned that the number of students is included from Woodrow Wilson now moving forward in these reports, and it hadn't been previously. So were the past projection numbers modified to reflect that change?
The, where, what we have with our numbers in the past, let me go to that table just to make sure I cite this right. I believe, and I'll verify with our analysts, is the number of students in the past high school represents Woodrow Wilson being there based on where those students resided. So that way, when we move forward with the projections, they're still in there. But if you want to get at the number of kids that actually are in that building, you want to look at the table that's on page 51 to know how did they get pulled out and what that range has been the last three school years of 1819, 1920, and 2021.
Thank you, Rob. David?
Rob, on the page where you talk about projection view, it shows an enrollment of 11,157 for 21, or 2021, and then 11,508 for 2122, and then continuing on. Is that based on the assumption that everybody that we didn't count this year will be coming back? All those 400 missing kindergarten kids and whatever?
No, but there are some. What we basically have forecasted in is that we get about 60% of those kids back next school year. And then others that maybe made that choice and they're like, hey, I kind of like this choice. Maybe it's homeschool. Maybe it's private, maybe it's parochial, that will get another 20%, 25% in the 21, actually the 22, 23 school year. So morphing that is some of the demographic shifts that are happening throughout the district. But it is definitely not 100% coming back.
Other questions? Jennifer?
Thank you. So as part of In-N-Out Migration Review, you talked about, you know, the decrease in enrollment this year and what was attributed to COVID in terms of the reduced kindergarten numbers. But two years prior, it showed a negative migration of negative 144. I'm just curious in your analysis and your update, Rob, if, if that was attributed to something specifically or, or if there could be more explanation given around, around what potential change in trend was happening there?
Yeah, excellent question. And I don't get the actual answers of why the students changed from receiving services from you. So I don't know, did they leave to go private, parochial, homeschool, or did they just leave the district? But we do see a trend in most years where we've seen the decreases across many grades. It's been related to when you might've had some flood activities in the community. And so I'd have to go back and verify on some of these past years if that indeed was the case.
Any other questions? Well, this does tie into the discussion that we're having later on the agenda, Rob. So it's great that you're able to provide us with this information. And I know that Dr. Gandhi, you've sent out more detailed information to us previously. So some of us have had the chance to review that, and we can also go back and, and take a look at it. It does still show that there is definitely the, the crowding issue or the overcrowding issue still at Discovery and Davies. I was curious to see what those numbers we're going to look at with the information that you are projecting as far as how COVID might be affecting our, our student population. So it certainly still shows that it's something that we need to address.
Absolutely. And if I can leave you with one thought, when we've seen these declines in enrollment, which is basically almost every district we've worked with in the Midwest, if let's say COVID would continue another year, the thing we have to watch, it's not whether they go to private or parochial because they have limits on their brick and mortar. It's go to private or parochial because they have limits on their brick and mortar, it's those that are making the choice to homeschool because that's almost limitless because that's your house. So that's something that we, we absolutely want to be watching and, and seeing if there's some sort of emerging trend based on the choices that you have to make for the safety and health of students to be in your building.
Sure, that makes sense. Anyone else have any questions before Rob finishes up? I don't see any hands, Rob, so thank you very much for your time and good luck at your next meeting. I've also been informed that IT needs us to take a break right now, so we'll do that, and we will resume in about ten minutes. I'm told that we are good to go, so it is six-ten, and we will resume our meeting. We're moving into the section of our agenda that is the recognition of audience, and there are eight members from the community that have signed up to speak to us this evening. At this time, the board will hear comments from the public. We ask that each speaker who has signed up to address the board state their name and address, and address for the record. We would also ask that speakers refrain from using this forum to criticize or complain about a specific employee by name. The board is interested in your comments and will listen carefully, but is not obligated to respond or to debate issues in this forum. Should you desire a written response to a specific question, you may request it. This evening, each speaker will be allotted a maximum of four minutes. We are going to work on keeping time as best as possible tonight so that everyone has the same amount, the same four minutes measured. Anne Marie is going to be our timekeeper this evening, and she will, she is going to demonstrate, there will just be a little buzzer or a ding that goes off at the four-minute mark, and then it sounds like that. We would request that you work to wrap up your comments as quickly as possible after that, and about fifteen seconds after that, if you've not finished, then there will be a double ding. So at any rate, we are welcoming you here, participating this evening, and look forward to what you have to share with us. And Michael Carlson is first at the podium.
Good evening, board members. Michael Carlson, four zero seven one, Forty-seventh Avenue South in Fargo. Earlier this evening, I sent an email to a lot of you, or most of you, all of you, I think, and so I'm just going to lay this out here. I'm a numbers guy. I came here to discuss data that could and should help to drive any boundary change decisions. I previously sent each of you two emails, and then also the handout today. I hope you've been able to take a look at all this, and I have some talking points about the data. So on the first slide I provided to you guys today, it was just the overall planning committee rankings where we were talking about Scenario A. And I know it's come up, that was it number nine out of twelve, or was it second in its category? Well, the answer is yes. It was both. And, and to that point, I would just like to say, you know, if you were running a race, and you had a thirty-two-hundred meter race you were running, and you had your choice of number nine out of twelve, or you had your choice of number six out of twelve, or number three out of twelve, or number one out of twelve ranked by experts, which one would you choose? My next slide talked about socioeconomics and low socioeconomics, and I know that's been a discussion point here as well, and that the Hanover Group had provided some information to you all that stated a one percent increase in full-priced meals will increase testing percentages by point six-four percent in reading and point seven-two percent in math for low-income students. Again, this is one value from one report. I went out online, found another Hanover research paper from December of twenty-fourteen that I provided to each of you, and it talks about how high art immersion programs can drastically increase the educational outcome of low SES students. So some of the numbers out from there is four percent of high arts, low SES students did not graduate from high school compared to twenty-two percent of low arts, low SES students. That's an eighteen percent difference. Also, seventy-one percent of high arts, low SES students attended and finished college compared to forty-eight percent of low arts, low SES students. I think if we really want to provide the best education for all of our students, we need to look at educational standards on a macro view of the educational system and not on a micro view focusing on a single value based on enrollment numbers alone. Slide three I provided to each of you is just numbers from your own maps, based on the nine-two-of-twenty enrollment data that was sent out, and for each of the scenarios, A, H, and E provided on your website. Really, the only talking point I really wanted to talk about here is that figures can lie. Liars figure, figures lie. It was something that a boss once told me. When you talk about percentages, whatever your denominator is, when you change the enrollment, it changes the percentage value. Key example of this was in Plan A, it's also in Plan E and Plan H, I'm not picking on Plan A, but if you look at the middle school, free and reduced lunches, if you look at the actual students that changed, it's fifty-three positive, negative sixteen, and negative thirty-seven. That's a sum of zero. If you look at the percentages, however, it is a positive two-point-seven-one, a negative nine-point-seven-nine, and a positive two-point-three-one. In that, no way, shape, or form in math equals to a sum of zero. So that's my main point there, is just that when we talk about percentages, that when we have a non-common denominator, percentages don't always mean what you think they mean. Slide four I provided, that has your own target enrollment data based upon the three times Y for middle schools, four times Y for high schools. In that, Plan A, Plan E, Plan H, doesn't matter which one we talk about, all of them have some school already at or overcapacity with the September second of twenty-twenty data, enrollment data. You know, obviously, that isn't taking into account any growth that's in the city. It is strictly data that is there right now. That is the main point that I wanted to make about that. Number five, mileage to and from. This was provided by Jeff Anderson, actually. He's another concerned citizen. And the main talking point there is just that Plan A adds almost a half a million miles of student data. I have some other slides there that I won't get to, but really, my last point is just this. With all of the attached data having been researched and looked into, the number of students that these changes will disrupt, the fact that we are looking at existing student numbers without any growth factored in, and taking into account that it has been stated that these boundary changes may only give us capacity for another two years, which is essentially when these will be placed into effect, I implore you to look into boundary changes really, if they really are the answer to the solution. It's historically been employed that we have been reactionary. I hope that you are visionary in helping to shape the future of FPS.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Michael. Lynn Telford?
I'm excited for the mask break. My name is Lynn Telford. My address is forty-three, forty-nine, Forty-Sixth Avenue South in Fargo. To start, I would like to thank those of you who have spent hours responding to emails and talking to people on the phone that have reached out with concerns about boundary changes from all over our city. Really, your commitment and dedication to the constituents is greatly appreciated. I understand today that you may be voting on scenarios for the boundary changes, and I want to speak to you about the guiding principles for your consideration in advance of your vote. The guiding principles were set forth to provide standards on which to base decisions when making changes to our boundaries. The guiding principles are not weighted or ranked, so no one principle is more important than another. Guiding principle number one is providing quality education to all students, which I completely trust occurs at all of our Fargo Public Schools. The principle also includes balancing the socioeconomic mix and some of the other data, which I think Michael covered well. The second guiding principle is setting school boundaries to make the best use of tax dollars. The information presented to compare the scenarios is based on new or additional bus routes, but doesn't take into account any costs associated with the increased mileage or gas for the longer routes that some of the routes create. The third guiding principle relates to setting attendance areas to anticipate changes and accommodation in Fargo's population growth. Creating a carve-out, such as in Scenario A, might make sense if the carve-out area had no more potential room for growth. But as reported by the forum this Sunday, there's a large amount of expected growth still within that Kennedy Elementary footprint. The fourth guiding principle is the use of natural boundaries when setting attendance areas. Fargo Public Schools has a history of maintaining natural boundaries, and I urge you to continue that practice. For the majority of our city, the elementary boundaries have a natural progression into the boundaries of middle schools and high schools. The boundaries of some of the schools, including Kennedy, on these scenarios do not even coincide or even touch the boundaries for the middle schools and high schools. The distance that some of these students would have to travel to middle school or high school is literally double what other neighborhoods would have to travel. The final guiding principle is promoting attendance in neighborhood schools. Plan H reduces the number of split schools and requires the least amount of grandfathering. Plan E realigns all elementary schools, but changes the current middle school and high school for some, and will have higher grandfathering numbers. Plan A results in five split schools, changes the current middle and high school for some schools, and results in the highest number of grandfathering needs. Reducing the number of split schools is very important so that elementary school children can make that transition, which we know is difficult to middle school, with their peers. Knowing how difficult that transition is, and how important it is to create stability and support for that age group, it's so vital to keep those kids together when they make that transition. The PowerPoint that you will review again tonight does not incorporate each guiding principle. It does focus on free and reduced lunch and English language learners, which relates to guiding principle number one, partial estimated busing costs, which is guiding principle number two, and then the total number of students impacted by each scenario. I do understand how difficult this decision is, but you have the guiding principles to help you. This is why I ask that you vote for the scenarios the same way that you narrowed it down to the four original scenarios, by ranking each scenario as it relates to each guiding principle. That would be the most objective way to move forward with a scenario. I thank you for your time, and I appreciate all that you do for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Nicole? I'm not sure how to say your last name, Nicole, so you can introduce yourself, and that way it'll be pronounced correctly.
That's okay. I screw it up sometimes, too. My name is Nicole Birkhartsmeyer. I will not be providing my address due, due to safety concerns with my husband's job as well as my own. Thank you for allowing me this time to address the board. My husband and I are raising three daughters, thirteen, seven, and two, so we have a long-term investment into the decisions that are made by the Fargo School Board. I would like mostly to address the instability that Plan A has for the district. Within the neighborhoods of Point West, Woodhaven, and The Pines, there is continued growth and new construction. Currently, there's an apartment building going up along Forty-second Street in Point West, as well as two additional apartment buildings along Thirty-eighth Street, just south of the Microsoft campus. Within the Cottage Wood neighborhood, which is a subdivision of Woodhaven, there's forty-eight undeveloped single-family lots, and in The Pines, there's currently seventy-two single-family undeveloped lots, for a total of one hundred and twenty undeveloped lots, along with the high-development housing that is zoned for that area. There's also infrastructure being laid along Fifty-second Avenue and Forty-Fifth Street, as well as along Thirty-eighth Street and Sixty-fourth Avenue South to accommodate the planned development in those areas. An inform article on December sixth also indicated that there is planned development south of the Fifty-second Avenue Walmart, which is included in Plan A. This area will continue to grow once the overpass at Sixty-fourth Avenue is complete. One of the guiding principles states, the district will work closely with area planners to address any boundary changes in anticipated future growth. The data that has been presented only includes current student enrollment, not the future growth that's happening in Plan A once these neighborhoods continue to develop. Another thing to note with Plan A is that at the start of the proposed change in twenty-twenty-two, it will put north overcapacity, and the district will once again need to address a capacity issues. The projected student enrollment will be above capacity of twelve-hundred until the year twenty-twenty-six. Also, Ben Franklin, that has a capacity of nine-hundred based on the capacity of Fargo North, will be at or over-target enrollment for the same period of time. And as you saw earlier in the RSP presentation, there is already concern that Ben Franklin will have capacity issues for the near future. To have the best interest of the students in mind, there needs to be long-term planning and forward-thinking as to how these boundary changes will impact the future decisions that will need to be made. For the immediate future, Plan A may appear to be the best plan, but in three to five years, this will not be the case. The families of Fargo Public Schools cannot continue to go through the constant change and stress that these decisions have on them. Plan H provides for more long-term stability for the greater portion of the district and will have less of a long-term impact on those families that reside within those boundaries. The district knows that in the near future, additional schools will need to be built on the south end, and to move students in Plan A now and again in a few years will only continue to disrupt their positive connections to school. Also going forward, I ask that you consider your options with a growth mindset tonight. The city of Fargo is growing in with the recent addition of fifteen-hundred jobs with Alderweiren and Amazon. This will bring in new residents to the city. The school board needs to do their part to attract them to the Fargo School District. With the continued growth in Plan A, the Fargo School District has an excellent opportunity to make themselves stand out above the surrounding school districts. Families will be considering locations of schools as they choose where they live. If they have to pick between living in a neighborhood in Plan A and being almost eight miles from their school versus living in a neighborhood just on the other side of Forty-Fifth Street and being one to three miles from their assigned schools, this will push families out of the Fargo School District when making these decisions. Long-term stability for students needs to be a priority for the board tonight. The continued growth in Plan A does not provide that stability. So thank you again for this opportunity, and you have a tough decision to make.
Thank you, Nicole. Jill Henke?
Hello, my name is Jill Henke. I live at fifty-seventy-nine Woodhaven Drive South. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for all the time and effort you have put into these boundary decisions. Tonight, I would like to share how Plan A has made it this far. On September twenty-fifth, the planning committee had an extensive discussion of the twelve plans, A through L. Each member was given a matrix to rate each scenario on a scale of one to three for how well it met the guiding principles. For this matrix, the lower the number, the better. The members were able to take this matrix home to fully evaluate each scenario. These results were shared at the planning meeting on October thirteenth. The top-ranked plans were G with thirty-seven, H with forty-two, I with forty-three, and E with forty-four points. At the end of the meeting, the chair brought up that he was concerned these four plans were not the best option to balance socioeconomic status and wanted to reevaluate Plans A and D. However, socioeconomic status is a pillar within the first guiding principle and has already been considered during this extensive evaluation process. And I want to remind you that Plan A had fifty-one points, which was ranked nine out of twelve. Following the meeting, an email was sent on October fourteenth from the chair asking whether the committee should potentially add either Plan D and/or A to the four plans. Two members responded they were not in favor of adding those plans. One responded they were in favor of adding both, and one member verbally stated she was not in favor of adding either. A brief Zoom meeting was held on September twenty-third. It was shared by the chair that the Plan A had three out of five agrees to move forward to the board meeting. There was no further discussion. The next planning meeting on November ninth started with approval of the minutes. One member stated they would like to have a discussion regarding Plan A having three recommendations. They referred to the open records request and stated that one of those members had sent an email stating he did not agree to adding another plan. This member explained he was good with what we had, but the chair had sent him a text message, and when asked to choose between A and D, then he picked A. He said he didn't realize they were choosing between adding A or D. The email was sent October fourteenth, and the member responded just twenty-three minutes later stating, "I'm okay with the four we picked." But then the text message was sent on Friday, October twenty-third, about one hour prior to the Zoom meeting. In the text message, the context of the question was changed. And you may say it's okay for a person to change their mind, but when listening back to the audio recordings of the meetings, the member never stated that he was in favor of adding Plan A. Only if it was asked to choose between A and D, then he chose A. Therefore, consensus was not reached to move forward with Plan A. An additional communication was made outside of a public meeting to have that changed. At the school board meeting, a presentation was made on scenarios A, H, I, E, and G. The data on cost and socioeconomic status was converted into bold statements on whether it had a negative or positive impact for each scenario. It did not include the results of the planning committee. It did not include the results of the Planning Committee rankings and failed to consider if all guiding principles were met for each scenario. With this information, I would encourage any of the board members to make a motion to remove Plan A. And remember, this was by far the lowest-ranked of these scenarios by the Planning Committee. And I ask all of you, in good faith, can you vote for a plan that has not been brought forth honestly, using appropriate channels, and potentially violating open meeting laws? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jill. Nicole Abrahamson?
My name is Nicole Abrahamson. I live at sixteen-twenty-four Tenth Street South. I have corresponded with a few of you via email, and I thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak about the boundary changes tonight. Plan E involves moving my district from Ben Franklin and Fargo North to CBE and South. This would be the third boundary change for us in a handful of years. The most recent change was made just a few months ago. I respectfully ask that you do not approve Plan E tonight and focus more on Plan A. This plan frees up the most space at Discovery and Davies and allows for the greatest growth in South Fargo. Plan A balances the socioeconomics across the district. Plan A allows school districts with lower incomes, like Ed Clapp, Jefferson, and Eagles, to remain closer to their middle schools, enables those kids to participate in after-school activities. This will improve school participation and test scores. I'll tell you what, our kids have been through a lot with COVID. They've done everything that you've asked of them with distance learning and hybrid school and masks and limited sports. Please give them a break this time with the boundary changes and focus on a different neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nicole. Mike Zimny?
Mike Zimny, fifteen oh one, Ninth Street South. I live in the Clare Barton neighborhood, and we're obviously here to talk about boundary changes as it relates to capacity issues at Davies High School. This has been an ongoing issue. In 2014, Hawthorne neighborhood was moved to Fargo North and to Ben Franklin to address south-side growth concerns and capacity issues. That has split the elementary school of Hawthorne and Clare Barton at the middle school level. But for the betterment of the city, those families, those students have moved north. They've invested now into that school. They've become part of that school. This last spring, in this board proposed the idea of moving Clare Barton School now north. That decision was finalized this last summer, and now Clare Barton and Hawthorne both go to North and Ben Franklin, again to address south-side growth issues. And so here we are, six months removed from that decision to move Clare Barton. We have students who are already attending Ben Franklin and North in anticipation of this change that the board approved. And our schools are once again being looked at at changing and boundary shifts due to south-side growth. And it's at this point that this board needs to stop looking at the core neighborhood of Clare Barton and Hawthorne to address south-side growth issues. We've done it once, we've done it twice, and proposing it a third time is absurd. The issue at hand, and too, is that in 2019, we had this boundary task force. I served on that task force. And one of the issues was, how are we going to address not only the south-side, the Davies capacity issues? And the report by RPS obviously addresses that this is a real issue, this is not going away. But in terms of also looking at capacity issues, we were tasked on that board with looking at the socioeconomic discrepancies between Fargo South and Davies High School. Two of these plans in front of you today only continue to widen that gap. They don't address that problem. They continue to widen the gap for socioeconomics. The vision of this board, your, one of the visions of this board is to address a equal education system. And so this board needs to make a tough decision. I don't think all of the scenarios are perfect, but what I do know is that Hawthorne and Clare Barton has stepped up to the table twice now in five years. To think that we should have to, one more time, change our schools, change our boundaries, be uprooted again, is unacceptable. And furthermore, this board needs to do its due diligence in terms of doing its duty to complete a review of making sure that those socioeconomic issues are also addressed. And so in terms of looking at that, you know, Scenario A is the best option, and you guys obviously have a tough decision. But it's the point in time now when other parts of the city are going to have to step up. We've done in our neighborhoods. Other parts of the city are now going to need to step up for the betterment of the entire school district. So I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Julie Anderson?
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Julie Anderson, and I live on Fifth Street North in Fargo. I am a parent to a child who attends elementary school and another child who attends middle school in Fargo. I am also an elementary teacher within the Fargo Public Schools. I know there was a great deal of effort and concern put into the Smart Restart Plan. I was impressed and wrote an email to Dr. Gandhi this fall. Hybrid allowed students to be kept in small groups, additional routine cleaning occurred frequently, and staff could be more, could more easily make sure that safety guidelines were being followed. CDC guidelines were being followed, more importantly. In mid-November, Brenton Niesemeyer indicated that a gathering in a group of ten or more people in Cass County runs a fifty percent chance of meeting someone infected by the virus. Elementary students and classroom teachers routinely gather in indoor group gatherings for hours at a time. This is much more than the fifteen minutes it takes to consider a person of close contact. I know you've taken the point, the position, that schools are the safest place. However, a key point is being lost here. Those studies show schools are safe if community spread is being controlled. That is not the case here in Fargo. Cases have dropped, but we are still near the top of states for cases per capita and second for deaths per capita. School staffers and students are testing positive for COVID-19, and there are many more asymptomatic carriers. In fact, there were five cases at my son's elementary school last week. In November, Governor Burgum stated the positivity rate for under eighteen is twenty-one percent, indicating there are many more who were tested that were positive. The American Academy of Pediatrics released a report in November indicating almost twelve percent of reported cases were in children. I know you would not make the decision lightly to move to hybrid or distance learning, yet the decision to stay the course indicates grim statistics such as the following. This information was compiled using the North Dakota Department of Health data. So far, over sixteen thousand people have been infected in Cass County. That number could more than double in the next two months. Numbers are lower in Cass County, but testing numbers are also reduced. The Thanksgiving surge will likely come within the next week due to the incubation period and the time needed for results. November's active hospitalized cases are projected to rise dramatically. North Dakota already has nurses from other states and healthcare professionals provided by FEMA through the U.S. Air Force. A projected ninety-five people may die in December and January in Cass County alone. Contact tracing in the community no longer occurs. Students are likely coming to school after being exposed to COVID. I urge Fargo Public Schools to follow all CDC guidelines for quarantine, social distancing, contact tracing, and the guide for reopening schools. A vaccine is on the way, and we want as many people to make it through without long-term health impacts and survive in order to receive it. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Lori Klein?
Tonight, given the number of people who've been asked to speak in one small space, I'll just leave my mask on and assume that you can hear me well enough. Superintendent Gandhi, Dr. Knutson, members of the board, thank you for welcoming public comment at your meetings. Tonight, I have the privilege of representing the parents, educators, and families that you saw outside, and hundreds of more who want all of our schools to open fully for face-to-face learning as soon as it is safely possible. The lights were to demonstrate support for all of you, for our administration leaders, for educators, for school staff, and for students and their families who are working so hard to continue teaching and learning through the pandemic. I want to begin tonight with a word of thanks to Fargo Public Schools and Dr. Newman for posting an article yesterday morning detailing the rationale and research behind your learning model decisions. Everyone should read it and the attached links. The article includes a quote from Dr. Rubin with the CHOP Policy Lab. "We need to rally around the likelihood that while in-school transmission is happening, it's far less than in other sectors of society. We would advise that the sequence of mitigation measures in communities features school closures as a last-resort intervention." The article also includes a chart by Dr. Emily Oster. She recommends that individuals and communities develop risk budgets. She says we should identify low-risk, low-payoff activities and high-risk, high-payoff activities. We should then prioritize the ones that are most important to us, both personally and as a community. Dr. Oster states that our goal is not to get the most activities allowed. Instead, it is to have the highest total benefit relative to risk. The chart included in the article shows where the U.S. has generally ranked schools in order of importance relative to other activities, and a separate chart shows how Dr. Oster, and I assume Dr. Newman, think that we should rank them. Ahead of outdoor dining, ahead of gathering in groups of ten or less, ahead of gyms, ahead of indoor dining, and ahead of concerts. Dr. Newman quotes other doctors in our articles as well about the importance of keeping schools in-person as much as possible, and we fully agree. Schools should absolutely be at the top of our priority lists. But Dr. Fauci, Dr. Osterholm, and Dr. Carlson have not advocated for full in-person learning in the situation we have in our community right now. Dr. Osterholm consults with the Minnesota Department of Education and has endorsed their guidance for local schools to shift to hybrid and distance learning when community spread of COVID-19 is uncontrolled as it is right here. This explains why schools just miles away on the other side of the Red River, who are also prioritizing in-person learning, have shifted to distance learning while contact tracing is impossible and important metrics are high and expected to rise through the beginning of next year. Dr. Newman also wrote about how schools in Europe have opted to prioritize in-person learning and have been able to remain open. Here is a quote from Dr. Oster that was not included in the Fargo Public Schools article, and we agree one hundred percent. She says, "I think kids really need schools. I think parents need schools. I think the economy needs schools. And based on data from Europe and elsewhere, I think it is possible for a society to open schools relatively safely." And then she says "but" in all capital letters. "I am very much in favor of public health and worried about COVID-19. And I'm basically in a demoralized place of feeling like it may not be possible for this society to open schools safely." Listen, everyone has told you who they are and what they want. Seventy-seven percent of North Dakota parents polled last month prefer hybrid and distance learning models right now. Your surveys from the summer were similar. Teacher survey and poll nearly identically. Even though these models create more work for them, they're prioritizing safer, more effective teaching models for themselves and their students. Our community, from the governor on down, have prioritized sports, bars, indoor dining, gyms, and the rest above safe in-person teaching and learning, and that's just the fact of where we are. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Thanks for joining us, everyone. That concludes the community comments from this evening, the recognition of audience portion of our agenda. So we'll move on to reports. Let's go to the COVID-19 Instructional Plan Committee update from Dr. Gandhi and Dr. Newman. Dr. Gandhi, would you like to start?
Sure. I think we have added to our board agenda recurring reports following our COVID Instructional Plan Committee meetings, so I will allow Dr. Newman to start, and then I will fill in any gaps that there may be.
Sure, thank you. You guys all should all have a printed copy of this with the exact numbers. I probably won't run through all of it, but just want to summarize and present to you that we met yesterday morning, most recently, and for the first time in a long time, it was overall good news. We started with our Cass County data, and both our new positive-per-day rolling average had dropped, as well as our fourteen-day positivity rate, which is considered a better indicator, had dropped. COVID hospitalizations, which they view as sort of a lagging indicator, did still remain high, not as high as during the peak, and the majority were people with underlying conditions or from long-term care facilities. Our active cases have decreased in most age groups across the board, with the highest remaining in that age of twenty to twenty-nine. The Thanksgiving surge, fingers crossed, we just have not seen it yet. According to Brenton, our epidemiologist, the people they have been talking to with contact tracing seem to have followed guidelines regarding smaller gatherings and limited travel, so we will continue to follow that this week. It's also believed the mandates are helping statewide. We continue to see the highest risk of infection right now in our community being within household contacts. They're seeing about a sixty percent rate of household members turn positive. And then he reviewed the rapid tests, the new quarantine guidelines, and the upcoming vaccine. Fargo Public Schools staff data was then reviewed. Overall, things are stable there. We had seventeen positive staff last week and thirty-five staff out due to positive tests. Encouragingly, both the sub and para fill rate have improved from previous weeks. Paras are still harder to fill than teachers. And Doug presented that FPS has agreements now for forty-one long-term subs in place through the end of the year. Fargo Public Schools student data, again, we tried to do later polls, so these were all of Sunday afternoon or Sunday evening. There was really no change appreciated in positive cases across the board. We had forty-five total student positives out of eleven thousand three hundred, and fifty students were in isolation. So these numbers are, I mean, they speak for themselves. Elementary is zero-point-five-four percent, middle school zero-point-four-nine percent, high school zero-point-five percent. Our student close contact, again, is going to run a little bit higher, and it was pointed out that these are primarily from households and not believed to be from classrooms or our school buildings. And then the new rapid testing we're doing for staff was summarized with our initial data. Initial testing was run on twelve-two, and they tested four-hundred-and-ninety-five staff. Six were positive for Fargo Public Schools and five for West Fargo Public Schools. Another mass testing, again, on the fourth, they were able to test four-hundred-and-thirty people, two positive from Fargo and zero from West Fargo. Pretty encouraging initial data. And then just the rest of our meeting, we, you know, we're planning to continue the current instructional model as is until January nineteenth, so that means elementary will remain in Level Four, and our secondary students will remain in Level Three. The plan still remains to bring back all secondary students at the start of the second semester on January nineteenth. There was a little bit discussion in our meeting around four versus five days per week. I might let Dr. Gandhi expand on this, but there's some logistic issues with how many children we have out due to quarantine. So, for example, our elementary kids have been sitting at that five or six percent range. It's very difficult for the students to connect with that amount of students that are out of the classroom, so offering that fifth day to allow not only planning and agenda time, but also them to connect to all the kids in quarantine. And then we voted again to meet on December twenty-first to assess this week's data, as well as data right before the Christmas break.
I'll just capitalize on what Dr. Newman referenced. I think the conversation, assuming if we continue with our plan, is really to, before January nineteenth, make a determination on when the second semester starts, do we transition to five days in person or four days in person? And that's really a little bit of an operational issue, and that's going to be based on the amount of students that are absent. We have been using, you know, a metric that we've been using and talking about is five percent absence, and that's just an average across each grade level band, meaning elementary, middle, or middle, or high school. So right now, we are north of that number across our elementary schools. That means some elementary schools, we have 12% of our students that are absent. Some elementary schools are 2%. Now, those absences can be reflective of COVID-19. Some could be non-related to COVID-19. But the general premise here is that when students are absent for an extended amount of time, they're not in our virtual academy, because that's a separate set of students that we have. So if these students are going to be absent for 10 days or even 20 days if they're a household contact, which is where we're seeing the majority of our cases, that would be 20 days of zero interaction with a teacher. So by having a four-day-of-week model, what we can do is we can allow the teachers to connect with those students on those distance learning days, so those students aren't falling behind either. So I think we have to be able to take a look at that. Some of the discussion that we had at the meeting was, you would have seen kind of both sides of this argument, representing one from our high school principal, one from our elementary principal, because right now, the numbers are different. At the elementary level, we're seeing north of 5% average absences, but at the high schools, it's less than 1% or 1% right around there. So we may have to make this decision based on what are we going to do for middle school? What are we going to do for high school? What are we going to do for elementary school? The second piece is, we might decide to go five days a week at the middle school and high school, if that's what the committee chooses, because we're not at 5%. But when we bring all the students back, we may see more students quarantined, and if that's the case, we would have to adjust accordingly. So those are some things that the committee is still wrestling with. I think they're going to meet on the 21st, but I also think that they're going to meet again in January, and that's probably something that I would recommend. We'll see what the committee decides to do prior to the second semester and then make that determination there. So that's really just some context around that conversation.
All right. Thanks to both of you. Does anyone have questions, comments? David?
Tracy, on the top here, you say the 14-day positivity rate dropped to 11.1. KBLY said 8.3 last night. Were they referring to something else?
I'm not sure if that's just taking, I mean, this was when Brenton ran the numbers as of Sunday, so I know our cases have been low the past two days. It might have just been more current. I wouldn't be surprised if it was lower.
Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you so much for your dedicated work, Dr. Newman, and of course, Dr. Gandhi. We appreciate the update, and we'll continue those updates at future board meetings. Dr. Gandhi has his hand up for one more comment.
Sorry, my computer was just loading to answer David's question. David, I just pulled up the North Dakota Department of Health dashboard. So as of today, for Cass County, our positivity rate is 9.66. That was based off the numbers today. Our cumulative was 22.09, but if I just look at North Dakota, it's 8-point-something. So maybe that's where it was.
Thank you, Dr. Gandhi. Tracy, did you have one more?
I'll just add one more thing, sorry. I don't know how many of you watched the video, but there was a little bit of dialogue at the very end, just, you know, concern from elementary school principals about, I think, again, like Dr. Gandhi referenced, we're seeing different rates. So they're feeling the strain of teachers filling in. They're very concerned about watching the data and what this is going to mean. There was also on the flip side sort of a ploy from high school principals really pushing for a return to full in-person learning five days a week as soon as possible. There was some citing of data about educational loss and mental health concerns. There was something said that a lot of the kids in Virtual Academy are struggling right now. Principal Dolan had quoted that there was like 2/3 of the kids in Virtual Academy not on pace to receive credits, and there was a big concern regarding that and how we're doing virtually with kids. So I'll just bring that to the board's knowledge as well. I don't know if you want to say anything further.
No, I think that kind of captures it. And I think, and the Virtual Academy students, that they're going to have that option as long as the governor's executive order is in place. Families and students will have the option to participate in the Virtual Academy, but as you may have seen in some of the research that we share with you as well, including the NSBA newsletter this year, there's a couple of articles as well. Across the nation, at our secondary building specifically, we're seeing a much larger rate of student failures and maybe students not being on track to graduate that are participating in distance learning environment. So we are, as a school district, working on a variety of different supports. I know each of our high schools are looking at different models of their virtual academy. They're also looking at different levels of support. Across the board as a district, we are also looking at using our COVID funds to hire an attendance specialist, to specifically work with the students that are not participating or engaging as well. So this is something that's happening nationwide, but it's something that we do want to track and make sure that we're keeping track of as well.
Thank you for that additional information. Okay. We'll move on to the FEA report. Kim Bellegarde, welcome.
Good evening. I've had to leave our meeting a couple times tonight because of dealing with an issue with my class, and I just cannot express to you enough how much teachers put in for hours, no matter if it's 3:30 or not, how stressed we are, and how alone and overwhelmed we are. FEA would like to collaborate with our district and be a visionary in the way we teach. We need to refocus what we need in our district, as not all of the right tools are in place with 33 ESP positions unfilled, and cutting benefits will not attract employees to our district. It is my hope that we foster gratitude towards educators and our education system. Thinking on that topic, we have our December winners for Teachers of the Month. We had Patty Donat from Discovery Middle School and Carol Moss from Jefferson was our ESP winner, and we raised almost $2,000 in our Jeans Week, so I was pretty pleased with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Robin, were you saying that you had a comment?
Yes, I did, after the second speaker. When we started this, and I opened my organization to serving children in June, and we all knew what the right thing to do was, but the importance of staff feeling supportive, supported, is invaluable. And so I really want to acknowledge that the extended amount of work that the staff are doing, this is an extended, somewhat of a trauma, if you will. And so I just don't want to move on without acknowledging that and appreciating our educators and knowing that I am thinking about them, and I would expect the board administration is as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, let's move on to Item C, the superintendent's report. Dr. Gandhi?
Just one update. This year, we will be hosting our State of the Schools and Public Focus Group event on January 7th, or, I'm sorry, January 14th at 7:00 p.m. This year, it will be a little bit different. It's going to be a virtual event. We are, we have now opened up registration, and I believe we're already seeing many families and many parents and staff members registering as well. So just wanted to make sure that we put a plug in for that event. This year is going to be, we're going to be seeking input for potentially future decision-making for considerations of the board and considerations for the calendar committee. So we're going to ask questions around if we have the ability to provide distance learning past this legislative session, would that be an opportunity that we explore for snow days? Independent of that, we have a second set of questions, really around, really just around the focus of, since we switched from days to hours in our legislative session last year, we do exceed the amount of instructional time that's required of us as a school district. So can we use that opportunity to leverage that time for, to our planning for student interventions? So can we do, once a month or once every two months, a early dismissal or a late start at each of our levels? And then can we provide that time for teacher collaboration? So those are going to be some of the questions that we ask. One of the things about State of the Schools is that we use information that we get to drive decision-making, and then we would bring proposals to the board. We'd get buy-in from our staff. It's very early in the process, so not necessarily everything that is asked at State of the Schools gets implemented the following year, and I want to make sure that we're clear about that as well, because it's just another piece of information that we can use. So I do hope that people can participate, especially the individuals that can now participate because it's virtual, that might make things easier, because we really do want that feedback as well. So looking forward to that event, and we hope everyone signs up.
Thank you, Dr. Gandhi. Anyone have questions for him regarding his report? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda, and after the consent agenda, we could take a short break if you'd like, because we have a couple of items that are going to take a while. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Robin?
I'm approval of the consent agenda with the HR denim.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Nikki, I saw your hand up as well. I heard Jim's voice. So motion by Robin, second by Jim. All in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Let's take a 10-minute break, and, well, so it is about, it's about 7 o'clock right now, so by 10 after 7. Thank you. Of the agenda, and that's the 2020 Audit Report Memo 74. Jim, you are going to introduce this. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to try to walk you through some highlights out of this little book. Hopefully, you've all had a little time to study it. First and foremost, I want to thank our accounting team, Jackie and Patty and everybody else in that department, because once again, we have an unqualified, unmodified opinion from our auditor, which sounds strange, but that's exactly what we want. They basically have said that all of the financial reporting was done in accordance with the government accounting practices, and they found no material mistakes or misstatements in any of the data. If you look at page 21, that's actually where the auditor's report comes in, and under opinion, they state, "The financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial positions of the government activities, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information of the Board of Education of the City of Fargo, North Dakota as of June 30th of 2020. The respective changes in the financial position and where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America," which is exactly what we wanted to hear. Over on page 23, under the financial highlights, just a couple things you might want to note. Our total expenditures for the year were a total of 100, or, excuse me, total expenditures for the year were a total of $192,112,446, and we had revenues in that calendar year of $190,699,303. So we actually had a slight decrease in our fund balance because of that. If you jump over to page 27, you'll see two different pie charts that represent both our revenues and our expenditures. And as you can see, the bulk of our revenue comes through state aid, 52%. Second-largest category is property taxes, of course. When it comes to our expenditures, obviously, personnel costs represent the vast amount of what we spend our funds on, approximately 80% in salary and benefits when you add up the different areas of our staff. If you jump back a few pages to page 32, you'll see the historic movement of the fund balance for the last decade, and we ended June 30th with a fund balance of $32,974,678, which represents approximately 20% of our operating budget, and that's well within the parameter of the executive limitations we've given our administrative team. Jumping over to page 35, may not be of immense importance to everybody, but I always like to look at what does our long-term debt picture look like currently in 2020. At the close of the year, our long-term obligation liabilities were $259,710,749. The vast amount of that has to do with our pensions. You'll see the net pension liability that we face as a district is $172,406,642. That's a function of the PERS and the TFFR program, both of which are run by the state, and both of which are currently underfunded. And that just represents what our balance would be if these things had to be fully funded in one year, which is certainly not going to be the case. Jumping back to page 93, you'll see the building fund, and I just wanted to point out that we closed the year in 2020 with a fund balance of $11,861,356 as of the end of June of 2020 in our building fund. If you jump over to page 96, you'll see the fund balance of our food service budget. We closed the year at 2,000, or, excuse me, $2,420,687 in the fund balance for the food service. And then if you jump to page 103, you'll actually see all of the fund balances on one page, and we have obviously a variety of different funds that have a carryover balance, all totaled, it comes up to $51,621,522. And last but not least, if you jump way to the back, page 163, this was the district's report card for the year. That's what I refer to it as. You'll notice that on the government activities, the major funds, and any other remaining fund information, we got an unmodified opinion, which is exactly what we wanted. In terms of the internal controls, there were no weaknesses or deficiencies noted. In terms of the federal awards, there were none noted as well. So overall, we've got what I'd call a 4.0 grade point for calendar year 2020. With that, I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
I'd like to move that we accept and file the audit report for the fiscal year June 30th, 2020, and forward copies to the appropriate agencies as requested. Second.
Okay, there was a motion by Jim, second by Brian. Wondering if there are any questions? I know Jackie Gap is here, also here. I'm sure that you would be willing to answer questions from board members. Anyone have any questions or comments regarding the audit? No? All right. Ann Marie, please call the roll. Newman? Yes. Paulson?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Gullickson?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brian Nelson?
Yes.
Robin Nelson?
Yes.
Knutson? Yes. Motion passes. On to Item B, school renaming decision, Memo 75. I think we're going to have a good discussion here this evening. I'm looking forward to seeing where this goes tonight, and all of us leaving here hopefully with something that we know that the community has been involved in. So just welcoming us all to this discussion. So that is Memo 75. Dr. Gandhi, do you have anything that you would like to say on this? I know the memo also comes from you.
I think I just want to start with, I think a lot of board members expressed this at the last meeting as well, and they will probably share this today, was my gratitude to our community. I do think our board is making a position to talk about that we value equity in Fargo Public Schools, and that there is a reason, and there's a lot of due diligence put into the thought process for considering something as big as changing the name of a school and the impact that means. So thank you to everyone that's been part of this process. At the last board meeting, we did allow Principal David Berkman to present to you some data and information regarding a process he went through with his community to provide input. After the names were reduced to the top five names, he went through that process again, and he, the sheet that you have in front of you is the data from there. He is available today for any questions that you may have. So just know that that is a tool that is at your disposal as well, and we look forward to the discussion.
And I would like to just make a few comments before we get going here for people that are in the audience or listening in that might not really know kind of how we got to this point. So I'm just going to reiterate a few points here. And that takes us back to the October 13th board meeting, which, following a community engagement process, board members rescinded the name of Woodrow Wilson High School effective for the 2021-22 school year. And in regard to the district's school naming policy, or in accordance to the school naming policy, a naming process then began. Name suggestions were taken from the public from October 26th through November 8th. In total, 214 forms were completed with a total of 129 unique names submitted for our consideration. our consideration. Board members looked through that list of 129 unique names, the reasons for those names being submitted, and individually selected up to five names, submitted those to our board secretary, and then we worked to create, that list then narrowed down to 26 names once board members participated in that process. And then at the November 24th meeting, board members completed that forced ranking of the 26 names as Dr. Gandhi talked. Mr. Berkman was here to share some information for our consideration, students and staff, and community vote participation, and we have the updated sheet with us here to reference this evening. The top five names from the ranking, they were in order of points received at that meeting, and I guess I would say at this meeting tonight. Well, it's up to each and any of one of us, but I see that we're starting from scratch again. But at the end of that meeting, there were the five names that rose to the top. Dakota High School ended up with 168 points, Central High School, 148 points, Voyager High School, 142 points, Agnes Ghillan High School, 140 points, and Valley High School, 132 points. So, I, there are a couple of items that I would like to mention. This isn't in regard to me indicating a preference in terms of my voting, although I think all of us might want to have some discussion about that, because our community members might like to, maybe we owe it to our community members to let them know, you know, where we're thinking here versus just have this be a completely silent process. But, following our last meeting, Dr. Gandhi had mentioned that it might not hurt, he had encouraged us to reach out to alumni from Central High. And I don't know if any other board members did that. I did that yesterday. I spoke with the office manager, with the Central High alumni, just to get their thoughts in terms of, is there any sensitivity, any, anything that they saw that would be, you know, something that we might need to address? And really, the feedback that I received was positive overall. There was a little bit of sensitivity in regard to if the name is chosen, it's an encouragement for us to make sure that, that we put together a process, and I guess administration putting together a process, where the Fargo Public Schools Alumni Foundation and the Central High Alumni Group is, is deeply involved in, if that, once a name is decided, if that were to be the name. Because, of course, with alumni foundations, there are legacies and gifts, you know, that are left in wills and that type of a thing, and just the work, that just acknowledging that there might be some work to make sure that, that it's clean and seamless, so that if someone is leaving, you know, some finances to that Central High Alumni Group, that it gets there, as the person intended. So, I just wanted to mention that, it, what, there was, there were no negatives, but it was just something that I thought that we ought to know about. I also have received some feedback in regard to the other name, Dakota. And I, I'm taking that into consideration, and I'd like us to, to think about this as we're making our decision. There could be a couple of different reasons why Dakota was suggested. It's, you know, we're North Dakota. It also could be that it's a nod to the indigenous population that was here before we were, 800 or 900 years ago. And so, and that's the Dakota Tribe. And, serving on the Native American Commission, I felt like taking some feedback from them and guidance in terms of how to approach this would be appropriate. So, I visited a little bit with the Chair of the Native American Commission. She shared with me that Dakota is a happy name. I visited with Willard Yellowbird, a person that is involved in our community a great deal regarding human relations, social justice, indigenous population work. He's not a member of the tribe, but he said, one thing that he encouraged us, and, and we don't really have this time right now, because we're, we're tasked with deciding this tonight, unless we were to change course, but taking consultation into consideration, tribal consultation, for example, making sure that it is something that would be welcomed, a welcomed idea. So, working in collaboration with our indigenous population within Fargo, whether that is the Indian Ed Program here in collaboration with Native American Commission, you know, I, I think basically what the encouragement was, we just might need to do a little bit of work to make sure that it's as seamless as a process, and, and that the honor is where we'd want it to be, if that's our decision. And so, I wanted to let you know that, that, you know, sometimes, I mean, I think we're all going to be working through this forced ranking, and whether it's with this school name, and then also with the boundaries, I think we have our best intentions at heart. And, and, and sometimes, you know, we just don't know. We're making a decision, and gee, I wish I knew that information when I made the decision. And so, what I wanted to do is just let you know that there is this encouragement from the community, when I talk about community, I mean indigenous community, to honor that, you know, they were here 800 to 900 years before us, and there might be some guidance that we could get from them in terms of how to move forward. So, that's what I wanted to mention to you as we, as we get into this, and I wanted to, we'll take a break when we're going through the matrix, but I wanted to open, open up an opportunity for all of you to share where you are, you know, to the extent that you want to right now, and, and certainly talk about your plans for, you know, supporting one name or another, or why, if you're comfortable. So, Nikki?
Thank you. You answered my first two questions. My third question would be, could we ask Mr. Berkman how he's feeling about where we're at with the list that we have? If he has any insights or feedback from his staff or his students?
Certainly, yes. Mr. Berkman, I know you said that you would be happy to share with us. Yes, the, we all do, or we ought to have the updated document. Thank you.
All right, thank you Superintendent Gandhi and School Board. I think COVID has made a lot of things in life more difficult, and we had more robust voting in our first two rounds from, in particular, from students. And students, I, I, one response was, you've asked us a few times already, and we placed our votes, and the board's going to decide what the board is going to decide. So, we had a little bit less student representation in this one, and I honestly do put it, do put it on the, just the COVID fatigue of, that, that brings, brings to our world. The numbers that you see, I, I think any of the top four, the top four vote getters, there's, there's moderate to high support, and some on, on the mascot, once a final name has been decided. We do appreciate the input that you have solicited from us along the entire process, and including the policy that was developed to make your decision of having a name change for, for Woodrow Wilson High School. I can say that there's been minimal to no conversation about, why did we have to change? Or, why did the board decide to make this change? That understanding that a historical figure had a position that isn't, isn't acceptable right now. So, appreciate the input throughout the process. And, sorry, I can't give you, give you more information than numbers. Numbers, I think, maybe speak for themselves, along with our requests at the top of the, the page.
Dr. Gandhi?
Just one comment I had to board members, and this is, I think, you know, we go back to kind of the governance piece. The last couple of board meetings, we've had conversations around mascot. I would encourage, you know, I don't know if that, I don't think that decision needs to be made today, in my personal opinion, nor do I know if that, we, this past week, we went through, or a couple of weeks ago, we went through a process to create a mascot for our virtual academy, and the students were oriented into that. From my view, unless it's otherwise noted by the board, that kind of falls as administrative work. And then also giving consideration to what Board President Knutson said, if Dakota is the chosen name, I think we would want to do work to make sure that we're not offending a community by assigning a mascot that's associated with the name as well. So, I, I appreciate the conversation around mascot. As your superintendent, I would seek guidance if that falls under the administrative purview. If it's deemed that that's a board function, then I would hope that the board would at least give some time and maybe not do that today.
Thank you, Dr. here. Dr. Gandhi, I, I agree on that. That's, that's separate from our decision today. That can, that can all fall from what we decide this evening. Anyone else have questions for Mr. Berkman? Thank you. Oh, sorry, Seth?
I'm sorry, I did, but they were answered basically by Dr. Gandhi. That was going to be one of my points, was if we, if we do choose Dakota, you know, where does the, where does the mascot come in, and is there the willingness to work with the indigenous community on, on picking a mascot that suits that, that name? So, but I think Dr. Gandhi pretty much answered my question, so.
All right. Well, it's helpful to have that updated chart. Thank you for that, Mr. Berkman. All right, any, anyone else would like to start? Nikki and Seth, I guess, you've shared a little bit, or had some questions. Does anyone else have questions or comments? No questions or comments? Okay, well, I'll just, I'll talk a little bit more. I, I just think that it is very, very, and I know we've received some input from community members, but it's just, I think, really important, we take this information that we've received from, from Mr. Berkman, and also, of course, the information that we've received from the entire community leading up to this. And, and just think, I mean, I believe that we've all done this already as we've arrived here, but take a little time to challenge yourself, and I'll challenge myself, to think about really, we, we know we're giving this, and giving the school a new name because we have to, but beyond that, why? You know, what are we, what are we really hoping is going to happen as a result of a new name for the current school named Woodrow Wilson? And, you know, is it to honor someone? Is it to build a story, build a connection with the unique characteristics of the school in association with a name? I would argue that we, we better be able to build a story. We better be able to build a link between the name that we pick and the school, and the opportunities that are offered by that school, the students, and the staff that are there. And if we can't build a link, I, I would be disappointed. I think it's an opportunity, no matter what name we choose, and I think any name here has longevity. And I think we can build a story, no matter what. But, just, you know, to what extent, and to what's the purpose? And that is, that's really, that's really my thought on the matter. So, if there are no other comments, then we can get started on our matrix, right, Anne Marie? Board?
Yeah, you should have that on your computers. If you have any questions about pulling that up, you just let us know, but you'll come to that landing page, and you have two options. The first one we'll do is the, the naming, and it will be just like last time, where you go through and do that forced ranking.
Should we go ahead then, everyone? All right, thank you. So, we're in a break. If you need to get up and move around, well, after you're done with your work, then that's fine. Okay, we are finished with our ranking at 7:38 PM, so we are going to be back officially in our business portion of the agenda. And Anne Marie, you were working on getting this displayed, is that right?
Yeah, Bill will put it up. And so, the results of how you guys voted are Dakota High School and... Oh, he, Bill needs to refresh, but Dakota High School with 28 points, Central High School with 26 points, Voyager High School with 15 points, Valley High School with 11 points, and Agnes Ghillan High School with 10 points. So, that is how you're ranking.
All right, thank you for sharing that. Jim has his hand up.
I'd like to make a motion that the board select Dakota High School as the new name for Woodrow Wilson High School effective 2021-22 school year, and direct administration to commence the steps needed to rename the school.
Thank you. Jim, there's a motion, and?
Second.
Seconded by Seth. All right, any discussion? I see Robyn's microphone on. You aren't feeling the?
No. Seth beat me to it.
Okay, all right. Well, it's an honor to make the motion, I bet it's an honor to be able to make the motion, and an honor to be able to second it. Jennifer, you had some, you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. So, in light of the conversation or discussion around the name Dakota, I'm just wondering if within the motion, if we would like to consider before any sort of amendment, might, may or may not be made, that part of that is to allow for time, to have that discussion to make sure that it would be supported, just because, trying to be sensitive to that conversation.
Any other discussion or comments on that from the board members? Jim?
Well, I would assume based on Dr. Gandhi's comments, he will indeed be reaching out to the Native American community in Fargo to get their feedback on moving forward with that name. And certainly, and I'd agree, I think it's an administrative function. Actually, I think it's a building-level function to figure out their mascot, but that too should be done with that consideration. But, I'm assuming, since Dr. Gandhi already shared that, I didn't really need to put it in the motion. I think that'll just be part of what he does as the administration commences to do the steps needed to move to this name.
And I, I would tend to agree with that, and Jennifer, I, I welcome the comment, and because it reinforces the necessity for that work to happen. Dr. Gandhi, did you have your hand up?
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I also do believe that board members did get communication from the Chair of the Native American Communication late this afternoon, expressing support for the Dakota High School name and advocating for that name. So, I, I'm happy to do that additional work, but I, I do think that the Chair of the Native American Commission did do that, and I think they had a conversation with you as well.
Yes. Any other discussion? All right, we're ready to take a vote, Anne Marie. Paulson?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Gullickson?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brian Nelson?
Yes.
Robin Nelson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
President Knutson?
Yes. Motion passes. So, that means, effective the 2021-22 school year, the school that is currently referred to as Woodrow Wilson will be referred to as Dakota High School. Thank you, everyone, for the participation here at the board level and also at our community level. So, looking forward to what is yet to, to come now that we've made this decision. All right, the next item that we are moving to is item C on the agenda, on 7C, attendance boundaries, memo 76. I would, I would like Jim to, as Planning Committee Chair, introduce this, if, if you're okay with that, Jim, and that I have some comments that I would like to make after that, and then I would like to open it up for discussion. So, Jim, thank you. Microphone on, please.
Just a couple of new pieces of data are in your packet, based upon the feedback that we had at the last board meeting. And unfortunately, they're not numbered, but as you start going through the package, you'll get to a page that says, "High School Graduating Class Size." That was a request, I believe, made by Robyn, who actually did all the data collecting for me too on it, so thank you. Just to really make sure we understood, are we going to have sufficient enough kids at our high school to balance the graduating classes? And you can... can see in all three of the scenarios, it increases the number of students at South, some more than others. So that was one request we had. And I think the other one might have come from you, Nikki, but I'm not sure. It was, you know, what will happen in terms of reaching capacity going forward with these different plans? When are we filled back up out South? And so if you go to the page that says at the top, when is Discovery and Davies expected to reach capacity, you'll see the projected date for each of the plans, for each of our secondary buildings in the top third of the sheet. If we were to grandfather by grade band, which was the information that was shared at the last meeting, you'll see the year that they would hit capacity in the middle block of data. And then on the bottom are just the most recent numbers that we had from RSP. One of the things that Dr. Gross and his team worked on for us and brought back to planning was what if we grandfather based upon family, not just grade band? I think that was Seth's question. That's a little more difficult to hone in on, but you will have a set of data that looks like this in your packet. And that really is giving us the potential number of children that could elect to be grandfathered if we allowed grandfathering by family. And what that means is if you had a student at South High and your family's being moved out of South High, all of his siblings or her siblings could, if they chose to, continue through to South High. Now, if there was nobody at South High for that family, that family would be moving to whatever the new boundary was. So when we looked at that data, of course, it's hard to assume that everybody would elect to be grandfathered, especially when you look at middle school students being separated from all their classmates because nobody else in their class was grandfathered, but they are. So I'm assuming some families would elect not to be. But what the data was pointed out to us is we probably would increase at Davies by probably 24 students per grade per year. So the first year that we'd implement this, there'd probably be an additional 24 students that could stay at Davies because they had a family member that was already there. And they were currently at Discovery, so they weren't in high school yet. By my calculations, that means if you look at that middle block of data with grandfathering on bands, instead of, you know, actually, Plan H and Plan E both have us still at capacity in 2022 for Davies. If we grandfathered for both grade band and family, then we'd probably be at 2022 or 2023 under Plan A for Davies as well if they all elected. So obviously, if we looked at Plan H, we're adding about 15 more students per grade level to Davies. If we look at Plan E, we're adding about the same number, about 15. And Plan A, which moved the most students, we'd actually have more grandfathered potential at 24. So that's the additional new data that we had that I wanted to share with everybody.
Robin?
Two comments and a question for Jim. Thank you for adding the high school class size, graduating class. A little bit of history, the reason we opened Davies, which was very controversial when we did, class sizes were approaching, I think the last graduating class was 562 students. Our best practices indicated that smaller class sizes allow for closer relationships, better academic outcomes, and more opportunities for extracurriculars. So that is really the impetus from Davies being built. So I, again, thank you for including that. That's a very important piece to me because I think it's something important to honor. On Plan E, I do have some concerns with Jefferson. We have heard from virtually no families from the Jefferson area. This Plan E would move Jefferson students up to Benton North. I operate a facility in that neighborhood and I am fully aware, we've surveyed them, there are many that are not attending child cares if there aren't openings in that neighborhood because they do not have transportation. So I really hesitate to move that pocket of students that literally live across the street from those schools up to Benton North, so I hesitate there. And let me see if I can remember my question here, Jim. Probably forgot it. Let's see. I don't. I lost it. Carry on. Thank you.
There's time for you to remember that. So Dr. Gandhi, did you have a quick comment?
Yeah, just one thing on the grandfathering data that you have. Just wanted to clarify that this is only if we allow grandfathering, so no parent has two kids at different schools at the same time. So this grandfathering data does not mean that if you had a sibling at some point in time in a certain school, you go to that school, this grandfathering data means that we went back to make sure that if you're a sibling and you're going to be a sophomore and they're going to be a freshman or a sophomore, or freshman or a junior, then the parents don't have to go to two different schools. And then we had to backtrack that all the way because you might have some rising high school students coming out of middle schools. So it really goes back to, I think, a third grader can potentially be impacted by this. So if a family has a student that graduated from, let's say, for example, Davies, and then another student would go to South, that student would still have to go to South unless both kids would be at the same school at the same time, which is a provision in this grandfathering.
You remembered, Robin?
I did. Dr. Gandhi, help me remind you. Remember, so we are deciding not the grandfathering tonight, but just the boundary scenarios. Is that, so that will be taken care of later? Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep. Okay, I'd like to make a few comments to address some of the comments that we have received from community members in emails and maybe phone calls and here this evening. And I also wanted to, again, I guess, just back up a little bit and give a little bit of a history in terms of why we are where we are for people that haven't been as involved, or I guess a reminder for people that have. So on July 25, 2018, attendance boundaries were reviewed at a board work session. So we have officially been at, working on this task since then, July 25, 2018. During the 2018-2019 school year, a task force of community members was formed to discuss secondary boundary changes to alleviate future overcapacity issues at Discovery and Davies. The recommendations from that task force were reviewed by the board at a work session on July 11 of 2019. And following that, the board held an additional work session to further discuss items, including the desire to keep cohorts of secondary students together, target enrollment for schools, long-term facility planning for Fargo Public Schools, and feedback from constituents regarding the proposed boundary changes that the task force had recommended. At the April 14 board meeting, a recommendation was brought to the board from administration for building a new school in far South Fargo. That school would have initially served as an eighth and ninth grade center and then transitioned to a full middle school serving six through eight grades. There was no motion from the board at that time to support a building of a new school, and a motion to that effect has not been brought forward since that time. So the focus from the board point was on boundaries for a solution. Moving forward then, the Planning Committee was assigned the responsibility of reviewing attendance boundaries. To gather input, input was gathered from board members. Ideas for scenarios was solicited by the Planning Committee from board, of board members. And to rank those scenarios and then bring that to the board, bring those options to the board for boundary scenarios based on a consensus of the Planning Committee. The Planning Committee met September 13, 25, October 13, 23, November 9, and December 4. Five scenarios rose to the top for consideration, and at the board's October 27 meeting, those scenarios were ranked, with three receiving the most support. Those are the ones we're talking about tonight, Plans A, H, and E. There's been a lot of involvement within our community members, and we thank you very much for that. A variety of thoughts tend to surface when the board discusses boundary changes, and that's rightfully so. The time the board, this time, the board has heard comments in favor of certain plans as well as opposition to plans, again, rightfully so. The board has also heard comments that now during this pandemic, it's not the time to make the decision that's in front of us. Additionally, the board has received some scrutiny as to how the process evolved, getting us to the plans that are in front of us today. I have received calls and messages from some constituents questioning the authenticity of the Planning Committee's process. And I get the sense there could be board members wondering about this as well. Additionally, I've been asked as president to consider removing Plan A from this list tonight. I want to let you know that's not my intent. I want to let you know that I am, I have complete respect for the work that our community has provided to us, going way back in terms of the individuals that were involved with the task force. I have complete respect and thank the members of the Planning Committee for the work that they've done to get us to the point where we are today. To help me make my decision, I called our source at the North Dakota School Boards Association yesterday because there has been conversation about how Plan A got added in, and I think it's important to talk about that. I think it's important to talk about the fact that I do not think that there has been a faulty process. If anyone else thinks there's been a faulty process, it's up to the other board members to talk about that. And I'm happy to take any scrutiny or criticism that could come my way. But I have listened to meeting recordings. I have looked at meeting minutes. I have consulted policies. Again, talked with a source at the North Dakota School Boards Association that does not provide us with legal advice because it's not our attorney. The source provides guidance to school boards all across the state in situations when something like this arises. And my conversation with the legal counsel there led me to the same decision that I have now, which is we have three plans in front of us that arrived in a manner that was appropriate. So again, I want to thank you for your work, Planning Committee, Administration for helping to put the information together so we have more to consider tonight, and the members of our community, the task force members. I was visiting with someone earlier today, and we were talking about jingle dancing, which is a dance that Native Americans do. The person talked to me about how they dance in, not in a direct line. They dance in, like, kind of like how a snake moves, back and forth, zigzagging. And, you know, we have a lot that we are dealing with in our community right now. COVID, we're getting a new name for a school. There was, you know, some people spoke pros and cons about that. And boundary decisions are tough. They're emotional. It's great if we all like where we live. I certainly hope that we all feel like we live in great neighborhoods and that we attend great schools. In the end, it's all Fargo Public Schools. And so I just, I open this up for any other comments or questions, you know, that board members have. But I wanted to let you know here publicly that I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, and that's good and fine. And there have been lots of questions. There have been questions about the process, and I don't have any hesitation with us moving forward. Robin?
I might add a little bit to the very beginning of your presentation. When I was not on the board, this came to the board level discussion, I think back in February or March of 2017, prior to Dr. Gandhi joining the organization and he instituted the task forces. So we're approaching close to three years on this discussion.
We are, and it's okay. We've learned as we've gone along. Anyone else have comments or questions? Okay, if not, we can move on to the next ranking on our computer. I need some help because I still have the ranking here that was from the school. I don't know if anyone else needs help. We'll take a little break too while we do our work. All right, it is 8:10. We will get started. Again, everyone has filled out the boundary matrix. Anne Marie is going to put the information in front or on the screen here. I have also received a couple of questions in regard to how we're going to be going forward with dialogue and that type of a thing. Of course, what I would suggest is that, well, I mean, I guess, board members, you can decide, but obviously, we can have dialogue. We have motions made and a second's made. We know we can have dialogue regarding that motion and have questions that arise after that is what I would suggest. So the information on the, well, Anne Marie, how about if you go ahead and read it like you did the last time, please, if that's okay?
Yes, the results of the forced ranking is Scenario A with 13 points, Scenario H with 11 points, and Scenario E with 3 points.
All right. So Jim, go ahead.
Based upon Memo Number 76, I'm going to move the board adopt attendance boundary Scenario A effective for the 2022-2023 school year and direct administration to develop a transition plan and bring it back to the board for approval at a future board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Jim, second by Brian. Now we can have discussion on that motion. Anyone that would like to? Any discussion? David?
I, it's beyond me how we can look at A. I'm looking at this chart. When is, when will Discovery and Davies be expected to reach capacity? Plan A has both been Franklin being at capacity in 2021 and North in 2022. Then what are we going to do? Then we fill them both up. It's fiscally irresponsible. It's the most expensive of the plans. I'm just, it's, A, I don't think that A should have ever been in consideration when the Planning Committee narrowed down their choices to begin with. A was nine out of 12. I don't know what's gotten it to the top. The, I don't know if you'd call it a threat or whatever of the OCR report about discrimination. The OCR, the Office of Civil Rights, was speaking only to discrimination related to race or origin. It specifically said in there, not based on socioeconomic conditions. I will not support A under any circumstances.
All right, David. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Nikki?
Because I'm relatively new, I don't know what all has been discussed in the past. But I have to ask the question, have we looked at all the options? Have we thought out of the box? Have we tried everything? Is there anything more to discuss? If we look at going with H, we buy ourselves a little space and a little time. I guess I have to ask the question because it's asked of me, is why during a pandemic, when some of this could change, do we need to be discussing this right now? I'm new, so I'm sorry if it's already been covered, but-
Do not apologize for any question. Brian?
From my understanding, what we're going to do here is when we pass something, this particular motion- this particular motion, we got to give the administration time to work out the details on how this is all going to unfold. So this gives them a year to do that. Also buys us, my perspective buys us another year to see what's going on as well.
So, in response to that then, if we were to go with Scenario H, that would buy us a little more time and a little more space and help us get a little farther down the road without having to manage such a big bill as far as the busing goes. I guess I'm just, I'm, I'm really struggling with this. My heart breaks for the Claire Barton people because I know they've dealt with a lot. My heart breaks for the Woodhaven people because on the surface, it does appear nonsensical until you dig into the data. And I, and I get that, but, and, and I have a full appreciation for those of you that have sat here for how many years of this. But I just wonder, have we looked at everything? For instance, the task force, we were not given the option to build on. Is that an option? Is that something we need to look at? If we're going to start moving kids around, I mean, I know we've discussed some of it briefly.
Jim?
Well, if, if I could take you back to my opening comments when we first addressed this at the board meeting, a meeting, two meetings ago, there are two things that have to be addressed. And when we choose to do them, is I guess, board's prerogative. We freed up a ton of space at CBE when we moved the rest of the Claire Barton Hawthorne neighborhood to feed Ben Franklin and North. So if we don't do anything else, we're going to have too low of numbers at CBE and ultimately at South to actually provide the programming that we need at a high school level. I think we'll be down to six hundred and some odd students at CBE next fall if we're back to full-time, in-person instruction. If we delay this even farther than two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, then those numbers will perpetuate on and show up into South High School too. So the first immediate thing we have to do is put enough students back into CBE to have a viable feeder going back into South High School. The other big goal was to try and get capacity at Davies and Discovery. So two things really have to be addressed. Could we hold off the Davies-Discovery overcrowding issue because of COVID? Maybe. We're not going to know. It's going to show up sooner or later anyway. But we still have to fill back up CBE because we emptied it out to fill up North and Ben. So, and H, A, and E all did that. All three of these would fill CBE back up. That's probably in my mind, the most immediate need.
Nikki?
So again, we've talked about the guiding principles. And one of the things we struggled with on the task force is, and I know we say they're all equal, but they couldn't be. There was no way to do that. So we had asked as a task force, how do we prioritize this? How do we help something rise to the top? Do we give up on the socioeconomic mix? Do we give up on the safe pathways to school process? What gives? What order do you want us to look at it in? And that's part of the reason the task force struggled. And, and we've still got those same questions today. This doesn't solve anything. So do we need to alter the guiding principles? Do we need to have a discussion about that?
So I, I would say no. So there are, I don't know how many scenarios we've looked at. And, but I guess, but we've been at this for quite some time, and, and that's okay. I, I think the, the reason we decided to go, the board decided to go down the process that we have been on now for, the road that we've been on for a while now is because even after a couple of work sessions, two board members had a tough time trying to figure out what way to go. You know, should we build a new school? Should we create more different versions of, of boundary lines? And it seemed to be that the reason that we got to this point is we decided we needed to get a committee to work on, start working on this at the committee level. Start working out at the committee level. Ask for, you know, again, additional boundaries to be suggested by board members. We had the opportunity to do that. There was, I think, appropriate timeframe to offer that up. Of course, you know, the possibilities are endless ultimately. We could go on and we could talk about it, continue on for another couple of years probably to talk about it. But the decision that the board made at the time was to work through the planning committee and have things vetted through the planning committee and have recommendations brought to us to consider for us to do our work. Jennifer?
Okay, so I'm going to attempt to answer maybe a couple of your questions, Nikki. So when you talk about, you know, the difficulty in deciding which of the guiding principles weighs heavier than another, and, you know, in your experience, right, that one rose to the top. And I think that was one of the nice things about how the matrix, the initial matrix at the planning committee was forced us to look at every guiding principle, all five, and then weigh them based on a one-to-three score, right? Whether or not it was acceptable, partially kind of acceptable or not at all in terms of how it related to each guiding principle. And the ones that rose to the top were initially G. Help me here, my memory. It was H, I, F, G? And so there were four, all right? There was one from every category. And I say this because one of the ones that we're looking at right now wasn't initially, it did not rise to the top of one of those four categories. And so if you're looking at a way to sort of equalize them, in my mind, that makes, to me, that says you've evaluated them against all five and not just one. Does that make sense? You know, it's another way to, so, so I, I offer you that for thought. And then I would say importantly, some things that maybe need to be highlighted again is that this, these numbers do not include RSP projections. And we just had RSP tell us that they anticipate a growth rate of, what, six hundred? Between five and six hundred kids? And so we already know within RSP that Ben Franklin is showing problematic, like, overcapacity next year. And now we've just taken, according to this matrix, the biggest, the largest amount of students and added it. And so we've just shifted the problem. So we are going to be here again, talking about this in a very short period of time. And this goes back to your initial really comment, question is, isn't there a better way, like a better solution that would provide better stability across the entire district? I personally believe there is, but it really takes hard work, a lot of discussion. And I get that this has been going on a long time, but we just keep force ranking things versus discussing and, and figuring out how, right? Nothing's impossible. So we just have to have the will. It wouldn't be easy. But I think that we could achieve long-term stability if we really took a big look, a big picture of the entire district. I think so often, in all of these changes, we've only addressed one thing at a time, right? And so you sort of layer, then it becomes more problematic, like split schools. Well, we have to fill up the new school, so we split this school. And now we have a problem because today, this is full over here and not over here, but we have split schools. Are we going to put them back together, are we not? You know, so, so we keep layering in the problem when we're not looking at the entire district as a whole. And that takes a much bigger conversation. I, I can tell you, I served on the task force seven years ago before I ran for this board, and we were talking about this then. And it was probably being talked about even prior to that. So we knew it was coming. Part of the suggestions were, you know, to really look at other facility utilization in terms of magnet programs and, and really how we can enhance some of those things and draw people in, but we haven't yet spent the time to do so. Those are the kinds of things I would love for this board to be able to do for the health of the district and for the students. And then I, I guess I would also say that if you're looking at the history of boundary changes in this district, we have never, there is no other, I think somebody pointed it out tonight. There is no other sort of elementary school or neighborhoods that feed into it that would be that far from their middle school. So we're setting a new precedent. And, and it's, it, it isn't the only option. And so we're overlooking that natural boundary again as a guiding principle, right? As in terms of importance and, and the burden that that puts on those students. And we're potentially creating additional inequities. And that is concerning, I think it should be to all of us. And I think that's what community, what parents are saying. What sort of that challenge brings, how that will change for their kids in terms of participating or opportunities to participate. So I guess if all of these plans, if it is true, really only buy us two or three, you said something interesting when, when you began with one of your questions that, you know, perhaps maybe asking the question differently or thinking at it. If, if, if all of them, or if we don't know the COVID answer, why aren't we taking the more conservative approach then, right? Because either way, it seems we're going to be back here in just a short amount of time. So why aren't we being more conservative, in affecting fewer families, students? All of that, right? Expense for not only families but taxpayers and looking at other variety options that would be less uprooting for, for students right now? Because socially and emotionally, that is a concern, the connections. And if, if there's a potential to undo or redo in two years, like, that's, that's something we should be talking about and considering. So I, I hope that I took good enough notes to, to remember some of the things that you had mentioned. And I hope that you find that helpful because I really feel like we need to have this discussion. So I hope more folks have more to add, but, yes, I'll, I'll, I'll take a pause. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members have comments? Well, I'll, I'll talk about the couple of options that I, that I voted for in the ranking. A and H. And this is why. So I feel as if, looking at our guiding principles and kind of tying in a little, Nikki, what, what you were talking about, I feel like all plans that were presented to us address our guiding principles. They address them in different ways. I don't believe that they would have risen to the top if they didn't. All of the plans in one way or another provide quality education for all students. All of the plans make, have different ways that tax dollars are made the best use of. An example of us deciding to use taxpayer dollars in a wise manner is not building a new school. Certainly, there are different, there are different ways those tax dollars are spent, and all of us have probably different interpretations in terms of, like, what does it mean to make best use of tax dollars? Based on all of, all of our experiences and our philosophies there. Setting attendance areas to accommodate growth, they all do that in one way or another. Some a little bit more, some a little bit less, but they all do provide us with ways that we can grow. And using natural boundaries. In regarding to the, considering safe routes for schools, I tend to pay attention to that honestly, a little bit more at the elementary school level. That doesn't mean, I don't think any of us would say we don't want a safe route to school, but the way K through five students get to school is a little bit different traditionally than the way most middle and high school students get to school. Partly because we just don't have as many, as many middle and high schools as we have as K through five schools. So they're farther apart. The way they're going to get to school in a safe manner is a little bit different. So what I try to do then is, in terms of looking at, we've kind of hit in one way or another all of the guiding principles. I tend to look under the guiding principle, or I did, the one that's titled Provide Quality Education for All Students. And there are three bullet points underneath there. Equitable space, resources, and opportunities. I feel like all plans provide opportunities for equitable space, resources, and opportunities in different ways. Some different, you know, the numbers aren't exactly balanced at the schools, but, but overall, there will be equitable space, resources, and opportunities from any plan that is up here right now. Strive for equitable number of students per classroom. Overall, we ought to be able to achieve that. The last one, strive to balance socioeconomic mix in secondary areas. Honestly, I zoned in on that. I, and I, and I have no problem talking about that. No, no problem admitting that that is really what I used as, as a focus. And I, and I bet all of us, in terms of these guiding principles, have kind of our own ways in terms of how, you know, how we rate them individually based on where we are and who, and who we are and our experiences and our thoughts in terms of, you know, how, how these boundary lines should be drawn. And I have a hard time supporting a plan that creates an even greater divide in socioeconomics. So a couple of them did that. There was one plan that didn't, and that was Plan A. One Plan A strove, or, you know, we were able to balance it out better with Plan A. Another plan, Create, helped a little bit more, and I think that was H. Yes, I believe it was H. H, H between Ben Franklin and North and Carl Ben and South kind of evened out a little bit more. I think that it lowered at Ben Franklin, or lowered at Carl Ben and South and rose a little bit in terms of the levels at Ben Franklin and North. But there wasn't much of a change in terms of, in fact, maybe went down a little bit at Davies and, and Discovery. And that worries me. It worries me that we get ourselves, I mean, we're, we're not central Chicago and we're not central Minneapolis, but we are Fargo, North Dakota, and we still have, in my mind, the need to, to really pay attention to that socioeconomic mix. And if we start going down a path where it's even a greater divide, it's, it's, it's going to be even harder next time. So that is, that's why, that's why I supported the plans that I did. And I, and also I, you know, Plan A, I was interested in in that there is more room at Davies and Discovery created by Plan A. So I, I just wanted to share with you where I stood on that, and I'm comfortable in sharing it and don't expect everyone to agree with my thoughts, but I think it's important for the community to get an understanding of where we are. Anyone else? Jennifer and David?
So on that note, thank you, Rebecca. I, I had taken some notes when we were listening earlier to those that, community members that spoke to us. And I don't pretend to fall in the category of mathematician. So, but I do think that there were some very important points and things that if we're going to talk about this disparity or what the research says, I, I really am interested to know, when I look at it and I look at the difference, I, in terms of percentages, in, in, say, for example, Plan H, because it's the first one on our slide, it, it's seven students in terms of the difference. And so I think that oftentimes, maybe the percentage can look, or, you know, the perception is that the percentage seems like a significant difference in numbers, but when in reality, it might not be statistical. And so, so I, I do think that we need to consider that. The other thing is, much like you said, we're not Chicago. We don't have inner-city schools. So yes, this is important, but what problem are we trying to fix? Is there a problem? If there is a problem in terms of academic gains, I'd like to know, should we be talking about what programming can help that? Because carving out- Because carving out a neighborhood to just move students that fall in a different category to make numbers look better on paper doesn't make sense to me. I don't, I don't understand how that helps students. And so to me, that goal, I need, I need much more behind that for me to get on board with that. Safe routes to school, Plan A is the farthest. You remove them all. H has more than even E. So if you're looking at which one of these three plans has the better, you know, safe routes to school amongst these three, it's H. You did mention CBH, and we did hear from folks that said they've been through three. That's, that's exactly the point. That's terrible. Like, we shouldn't be continually yanking and moving kids and families around. Goes back to, again, a better long-term solution, a better long-term plan. And, but I believe H does not do that. H does not change them again. It honors the change that was voted on, not fully implemented yet. Some took that first-year opt-in this fall, and the rest will be implemented next fall. But H honors that plan. So that, again, if you're looking at just pros and cons, I, I think it's important to, to point out those differences. So, so I think that all of these plans, certainly we have looked at and talked about and reviewed research and data, and even within those studies, our schools, well, some of our elementaries actually, maybe we should be talking about because they do fall outside of that range in Hanover, but our current situation, they don't. So again, it goes back to, okay, we need to be looking at then all of them, right? So that's my follow-up. Thank you, Rebecca.
All right. Anyone else have comments or questions? Because we do have a motion on the table. David?
I agree with what Jennifer just said. I think we've made this socioeconomic issue into a, a problem that, that simply doesn't exist. We don't have inner-city schools. We're, we're talking, as Jennifer said, about a difference of, of seven kids. I think it's, it's a real convenient reason to decide that we've got to carve a chunk out of the corner of our school district, bust them over the top of another middle school, high school complex to fix a problem that I honestly don't think even exists. Plan A does carve out more growing room for Davies and Discovery, but it fills up North and Ben immediately. There is no time. What are we going to do when the administration comes to us in 2022 and says, North is at capacity? We've been told that there are lots of empty lots down in Kennedy, the Kennedy area is still going to grow, they're putting up multi-housing units, so we're going, we'll be bringing even more people out of that area, up to schools that look like they're full right now. We know that sometime in the future, and probably not that long, that far into the future, we're going to have to build more schools on the south side because that's where our growth is. But what are we going to do when we fill up North and Ben? Are we going to add on to North and Ben? And then be talking in another 10 years about these empty schools up on the north end? I, I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I can't see how A is a viable option.
Nikki and then Seth.
I'd like to pick up on what David said. I have great concerns about filling up other schools in the wake of this one. When you look at Plan H versus Plan A, yes, it provides room for a few less students, but it gets us a little farther down the road at a third of the cost, at a third of the cost. And I'm all for socioeconomic mix. I know from being on the task force that, that A fixes a lot of things that we want to tackle. I get that. I don't mean to say otherwise. But given the situation we're in, given that we just voted down building a new school, given that this is a third of the cost, and it still provides, you're increasing CBE by 117 students under Plan H. You're increasing CBE by 134 at three times the cost. I mean, it just, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. We're increasing South by 97 students or 150 students, but then you're looking at the cost of it as well. And if we know, given what we saw with the reports tonight, I'm pretty sure we're going to be back here talking about what we're going to do on the south end of town, and it's probably going to involve discussion on a new building. So why don't we take a little more economical approach, buy ourselves some time, get through COVID, and see what comes out the other side? It's not that I want to prolong this. I'm sorry you guys have been in this so long. I'm just not sure we're at our best solution yet. I guess that's my thought.
Thank you, Nikki. Seth?
First, I'd just like to say that no matter what plan we go through, kids are moving. Somebody's, somebody's moving, and I have the utmost sympathy for any parent that has to make their kid go to another school because of decisions we made. I know it's, it's unfortunate, but it's the reality that we, that we're in right now. And when asked by several people in the community that I, that I do support A, and the reason why I support A is because I asked myself why we're, why we're all sitting here right now. And it's because we decided not to build a new school, and the, and the reason for wanting to build a new school was because we were overcrowded down south. Plan A opens up the most room. So for me, that's the no-brainer because that's why we're here. I do understand your concern, David, with filling up these north high schools and then what do we do about that? I'm not all that overly concerned about it because I live in those, in that neighborhood, and I live near those schools, and I watch single-family house after single-family house after single-family house get torn down, and one-bedroom apartments where no kids live in replace them. So I'm, I'm not as concerned, maybe in the immediate, but I feel like that will eventually alleviate itself because I don't see anything happening at the city level to stop that from continuing. So I'm not all that concerned about the, the fill up, up north and being that close to being busting at the seams there because I just, like I say, like, I see, I see the north side change so much. And yeah, there might be some empty lots down south, but, I mean, I just watched an entire city block by my house get off, all the single-family homes get torn down within a year, and now a building for NDC is going up. And that just happens over and over and over again. So I'm really not all that concerned about, about that overfill issue.
Thank you, Seth. Anyone else? Jennifer?
I think that's an interesting point, actually, and it makes me think about these RSP maps. And I am curious if maybe someone could speak to sort of the projections where they have the heat maps where kiddos live and where they project them to be, like the zero-to-four specifically. And because you mentioned Hawthorne, I remember actually seeing this bright red spot. And now granted, that's going to take a few years to get there, and we'd have to look at how that aligns with any sort of boundary modification we would make. But do you know what I'm speaking to? Because I, I actually would like to, I would like to know your thoughts on that.
I don't, but what you're discussing is the reason why I asked Rob the question on his heat map, if that was past or future, because I don't see, I don't see the heat up north. And where, where we're worried about making this decision and going and being at close capacity. There's just, there's no heat on that map in that, in those areas.
And his answer was, it was, it was 10 years prior, but is that accurate? Did he understand the question? Because I guess when I look at this, I think the opposite, like, it's, it's both, like, behind and forward, like it's a projection of what, rolling five years, right?
I feel like I was pretty clear on my question, so I think he, I think he understood what I was asking.
But can someone correct me? I mean, this is, RSP's data is five-year, five years out, right? Anne Marie, maybe can answer that question.
I know Dr. Gandhi's taking a look here at the information to see if he can find exactly what you're, you're asking about, Jennifer.
Yeah, I think, I don't know still.
I see, I see.
I, I just want some curiosity into what the question is. Yes, their enrollment projections are five years out. That's what RSP's projections do. The heat map showed over the last 10 years where we've seen the increased density for school-age children within our school district. If you look at page 41 of, of their map, that shows over the course of, I believe, the next five, well, actually, it's even long-term, where you're going to see growth areas within our district. So specifically on the west side of town, that, west of the interstate, south part of town, that's shaded purple, which according to them, that's 10 years of growth out. East of the interstate, you're seeing more green and purple. Green is, you're seeing current growth. And then there's one spot, 511, that's yellow, which is, you'll see growth there five years out. So I think that's where that is. Page 41 of the analysis report.
But where's the zero to four? He alluded to it, but I don't know if it's in this packet.
Where, you mean, where, where are we going to see growth in zero to four?
Yes, the age.
That would be all the green shaded areas, current.
No, this is, yeah, but it's, it's a specific age range. It was in our last packet. It might not be in this one.
Sorry, I'm just looking at growth for school-age children.
Yeah.
Over the next couple of years. I think you're referring to birth rate.
Yes.
And then that translates out.
Correct.
But I think page 41 is the product of what they expect from the current birth rate, along with all the other factors that they're looking at.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I want to just check in here. It's a quarter to nine. We have, we had the forced ranking of the three scenarios. Plan A rose to the top on that. We have a motion on the table in regard to the support of Plan A that we'll need to vote on. And I'm wondering if there's anyone else that needs to make any comments that hasn't already had the opportunity to ask questions or make comments? And then if we're going to be able to get to the point where we can vote on this based on what the decision is of that motion, we will figure out what we're doing next. Anyone else? Okay. Anne Marie, could you please call the roll? Benson?
No.
Gullikson?
No.
Holden?
Yes.
Brian Nelson?
Yes.
Robin Nelson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Paulson?
No.
President Knutson?
Yes.
Does that mean motion passes? Five, five to three?
Five to three, yes.
Okay. So we have the motion passed supporting scenario A. And again, that is to go into effect for the 2022-23 school year. It directs administration to develop a transition plan and bring it back to the board for approval at a future board meeting. So we will have the opportunity to discuss the details of that transition plan and ask questions and later on. So we'll, we'll look forward to getting an update from administration in terms of kind of timeframe, in terms of how that might evolve. Dr. Gandhi, do you have anything to speak to on this regard at this time?
No, I think if, at this point, we will probably just follow what we did with the last boundary change that was approved in the summer and follow the similar process for the implementation plan.
All right. That sounds good. Thank you for everyone on your, with your work on that item this evening. That takes us to, that finishes out our business and takes us to board reports, committee liaison and correspondence reports. Robin?
President Knutson, would the board entertain postponing our liaison reports just due to the hour of the day?
I would be okay with that unless, I'm not sure if there's anything that is very, you know, pertinent and timely that needs to be discussed. Is, are the rest of the members okay with putting that off? Okay? Is there anything that, that needs to be shared that's timely? Jennifer and then Nikki, or Jennifer and then Tracy, did you have your hand up? Okay, Jennifer?
So mine is actually, I was trying to get your attention. Are we not, grandfathering was forwarded by the planning committee too, to be discussed. So are we not talking about that?
So the details regarding grandfathering will be following up, also regarding the implementation on that transition plan. I believe that's what we would be doing, right, Dr. Gandhi?
When we did this in the summer, we included the grandfathering information in the implementation plan. So we would bring a suggestion, and that's when the board can decide.
So, so you're not looking for a recommendation from the board, whether or not?
I absolutely would, and I mean, I don't, yeah.
Not this, not this evening, it wasn't on the agenda.
Because if we get, well, that came to last planning as, because we're going to get questions about it, whether or not it's going to be supported or not, and the fact that it came from planning to be supported, is it fair to say then the answer is, we don't know the details, but there's going to be some sort of grandfathering?
Yeah, we don't, I think that's a fair question. At this point, ultimately, it's going to take board action to figure out what implementation plan gets approved. My request to the full board would be, let us bring an implementation plan to the planning committee, have discussion there, and then the planning committee can move forward with, with bringing the implementation plan to the full board or discuss it there, if that's okay.
And that that would include grandfathering?
Correct.
So we have opportunity for discussion and questions and, and requests for changes or, or more clarification, but we have the information that's been put together for us this evening as a starting point.
Got it.
To launch us for that discussion. Tracy?
Sorry, I'll be quick. One of these just won't be pertinent, January 12th. And my report, I just wanted to do a plug for a project called the Matthews Voice Christmas Gift Giving Project. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that. It's very cool. It's a, it's a project in our community where they work with Fargo, well, they work with all public schools, so West Fargo, Fargo and Morehead, to identify children who are experiencing homelessness. And they focus on particularly unaccompanied youth, and they just provide various ways to support them, particularly with the goal for them to complete and graduate high school. So my children and I just took part in their Christmas gift giving project, and it's still open, and they're looking for people to participate. You can basically sign up to support an unaccompanied youth in our district and buy their Christmas presents that they've asked. It's all anonymous. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else have anything that's timely? I would say just make sure that you pay attention, close attention to the information that is on the president's report. We have, our next homework is due January 6th, and then the details of a variety of, of meetings and some calendar notes there that Anne Marie has provided to us. And so I thank you all for your time this evening. It's 8:52, and we are adjourned.
Merry Christmas, everybody.